We're just waiting for his, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, because it's all on these screens.
We're ready to go then?
Yeah, because you and me are on the screen.
I'd like to call the meeting for Friday, April 20th, 2021, to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some of you may have been here for what we call an open podium, and it's an, we have an invitation every week. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the City Council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting. Wasn't quite as much for a while with COVID, but things are starting to get a bit better. The council typically meets the first and third Tuesday of each month from, and the time for the open podium is 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412, by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, the meeting on the evening of the meter speaker and speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to other unscheduled Eden Prairie resident speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. First item is proclamations and presentations, and we are very happy to introduce to you Hennepin County Commissioner Chris Latondres. And this is your first year as a county commissioner, I believe?
That's right.
And you represent the northern part of Eden Prairie. I believe it's from Highway Five North, and we're very happy to have you here this evening. Commissioner?
Hey, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Acting Mayor Nelson, council. As colleagues in local government, it's really an honor to join you this evening, and I just want to thank you for this invitation to connect with you and your residents. My name's Chris Latondres, your newly elected commissioner for Hennepin County District Six. I think Eden Prairie is among the few cities in Hennepin County that gets two for the price of one, represented both by me and my colleague Debbie Gattell, Commissioner Debbie Gattell. And this short update is designed to build on the practice of my predecessor, Jan Callison. She made it her goal to attend at least one council meeting per year in each of the 16 cities that are represented in District Six. You can advance to the next slide that shows what those cities are. And I intend to continue in this tradition. It's important because local government is built on strong partnerships, and I want to do everything in my power to ensure the partnership between Hennepin County and the city of Eden Prairie stays strong for years to come. There's no question in my mind that the painful events of this past year have really tested us like never before. Before getting elected as commissioner, I served as vice chair of the Hopkins School Board. And I'd often observed that leading in local government through these times, particularly through the pandemic, has often felt a little bit like Apollo 13. There's, there's no manual for the kind of decisions that we've had to make, or the ways we've had to adapt and evolve and innovate to serve our residents in these challenging times. And I've been so proud of the ways cities like Eden Prairie have stepped up to meet the moment. And I don't think it's any surprise for that reason that more than ever before, people are looking to nonpartisan local government, our school districts, our cities, and our counties, not only for a little extra help in hard times, but to really model the kind of leadership that I think we're all hungry for and, and really need and deserve period from government. And in 2021, that leadership starts with perhaps the biggest challenge we've faced together in a long time, and that's our continued response to the COVID-19 pandemic. If you can go to the, the next slide. I'm actually missing a, a sheet here, which is fine. But what, what you see highlighted here are some of the ways that Hennepin County in particular has been serving residents, particularly on the public health side of the equation in our COVID-19 response. We've led vaccination efforts. We've led testing efforts. We've de-densified congregate settings, particularly settings that serve residents like our homeless residents. And that's been important for public health reasons to, to meet, meet this moment with that kind of urgency. If you can go to the next slide. We've also taken unprecedented action to directly invest in our residents. The Federal Cares Act, 220 million, enabled us to invest in some of the ways that you see highlighted here on this chart. And tonight, I just wanted to highlight a couple of those ways in particular because of some of the ways they've directly benefited Eden Prairie residents. Next slide. Well, this, this is just a survey here of broadly speaking, some of the ways we've invested in residents. Tonight, I'm going to highlight the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and some of our small business supports. Next slide. So these are programs that have put dollars directly into the hands of our residents at exactly the time they've needed them the most. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we've provided over 16 million in emergency rental assistance to more than 6,000 households, including 42 Eden Prairie households receiving over $105,000. Next slide. We've also invested more than 69 million in direct grants to our small businesses. The county's Housing and Redevelopment Authority was the vehicle we used to, to get that aid to our small businesses. And 286 of these grants, or just over 3 million in funding, has been dispersed to business, small businesses right here in Eden Prairie. In January, I took over as chair of the HRA, so this work remains a top priority of mine. And I think it takes on new urgency and meaning as we look to the passage of the American Rescue Plan, which is unlocking 240 million in new funding for us that we can spend over the next few years. And if I have anything to say about it, we're going to be investing these dollars in ways very similar to how we've invested those cares allocations, including supporting our small businesses. Next slide. As a part of these HRA activities, I also want to highlight an exciting new initiative called Elevate Business, Hennepin County. It's a partnership with the Minneapolis Regional Chamber of Commerce to help small businesses through technical assistance, consulting, and educational programming. And I would encourage any and all small businesses here in Eden Prairie to look into this program. Our office is happy to help get you connected and would encourage council to share the information with residents. I know you all have your own chamber as well, so I think it may, this may be a, I just made a presentation to Edina City Council a couple of weeks ago. They have their own chamber, and one of the things that we helped interface there was a connection specifically between this program and their chamber. So that's something perhaps that can come out of this meeting tonight. Next slide. Just wanted to offer a couple of updates on Southwest Light Rail. Obviously, a huge partnership between Hennepin County, the Met Council, and the city of Eden Prairie that's transforming our landscape already and will transform our landscape and residents' lives from a transit standpoint, from a redevelopment standpoint, mobility standpoint, economic standpoint in the future. I won't go into detail on all of these bulleted lists. You all are experiencing that in real time. I think the, the biggest top line message here for residents to know, as you all are well, well aware, is that, you know, it's taking a little bit longer and it's going to cost a little bit more than we initially expected. So my office remains at your service in the conduit as we need to have these conversations with Met Council and other relevant actors as it relates to this project. Next slide. The final thing I wanted to highlight tonight is the Hennepin County Climate Action Plan. Just today, me and my board colleagues unanimously approved the passage of a revised emissions target, net zero by 2050. That accompanies the development of a really robust climate action plan. It's been a 14-month process in conversations with over 2,400 residents, cities across 20 different departments, every line of business in Hennepin County, aimed at creating a roadmap, more than just a goal, for how we can build a more bold and resilient future together as it relates to climate. And I think the, the plan is set for, for approval here in a couple of weeks. We've gone through several iterations of it. If you go to the next slide, these are some of the strategies and core components of the plan as it's currently drafted, but we're actually in the middle of an open public comment period on that right now. So I would invite residents to be in touch with my office to review the plan. If you have any additional last minute feedback, we're, we're here to take those comments. Next slide. Finally, I just wanted to highlight some of my own priorities as it relates to this huge body of work in Hennepin County. Obviously, county government intersects with so many facets of our lives as commissioners, you know, individual commissioner offices. There's really no way for us to interface with all of the work in a direct capacity from a leadership standpoint, so we really kind of have to pick and choose where we're really going to work and focus. And my areas are highlighted here. So my top priority as commissioner, as chair of our Housing and Redevelopment Authority, is affordable housing and the intersections with our rising homelessness crisis. As vice chair of the Hopkins School Board, I saw up close and personally the explicit connections between student achievement and, and the availability of affordable housing. My wife's a nurse practitioner at Hennepin Healthcare. She reminds me every day that housing is healthcare, and it's really something, an issue that demands urgent action. Number two is the intersections. I'm vice chair of the Public Safety Committee, and one of my top priorities in particular is advancing reforms at the intersection of our 911 and emergency dispatch systems and mental health. That's something that Hennepin County, it's a space that we're stepping into, embedding more social work supports in partnership with local law enforcement across Hennepin County. We're currently partnering, I believe, with 12 cities, and we're planning to expand that to 32 cities in the, in the, in the coming year, something potentially for us to be in conversation about. And finally, economic inclusion. I've mentioned some of the ways that I'm committed to supporting our small businesses, but I'm also really interested in seeing that the county take on a greater leadership role in promoting entrepreneurship, investing in our workforce development, and really building equitable, inclusive opportunity ladders, particularly for our residents that are typically left out. And then this is all done within a disparity reduction frame, because we know that racial disparities in Minnesota are among the most acute in the nation. And if the events of this past year are any indication, it's really up to us in government to take on the really urgent and important work of aligning everything that we do with our reducing disparities for our residents that are most impacted by them. So next, next slide. You know, in closing, this is really an open conversation. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments that you have and really just sort of leave with an invitation both to you and, and to your residents that my office is here, we are at your service. If you advance to the next slide, and this might be the one to leave with residents, this is my personal contact information and the contact information for my, for my team. But I, if, if you have some time for some questions, I'd, I'd entertain some questions or comments.
Questions from council members? Lisa?
That's PG. PG, did you have a question?
PG?
Yes. Hey, Chris, nice to see you and congratulations. A couple questions. Regarding to COVID, how are we doing in Eden Prairie in terms of vaccination? Do you have any stats that we can share with them? Is the trend of COVID is decreasing in Eden Prairie or spinning or going down? And I have another question.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that question, council member. I'd have to have my office get back to you with those specific numbers for Eden Prairie, but I'm happy to do that here within the next 24 hours.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I'm so glad that Net Zero 2050 Final Action Plan that in your office is heading on, especially in general. And as you know, that Eden Prairie Act Club has an action plan in the line of that as well. In regard to that, I was wondering, do you, I mean, when you specifically that you're doing in terms of giving residents any spending for solar electric and also buying electric cars?
So I caught the second part of that question about electric cars. Can you, can you repeat the first part of that question?
Solar, solar, let's say I want to put solar panels on my house to energy for that solar energy. Electricity, is there any incentive that, that you're increasing or anything going on there?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that question. So the, the two parts of your question, as I understand it, is specifically some of the ways that Hennepin County is partnering around, partnering with residents around solar, and the other would be around vehicle electrification, the infrastructure to support that. I'll have to get back to you on that first question. On the second point, so we sort of look at this plan in two ways. Number one is the steps that we want to take within Hennepin County, within our own enterprise to get ourselves to, to net zero. The other are the actions that we can do more regionally to, and I mean, this will require partnerships with cities, school districts, sort of all, all of us taking our individual actions and finding places for partnership to get to that net zero goal. But a couple of ways that will lead in both of those ways is, you know, number one, with our own vehicle fleet electrification. And then number two, I do think we're going to take on a greater leadership role in just helping invest in the infrastructure needed to power residents' vehicles as we transition from, you know, traditional vehicles powered by traditional fossil fuels to electric. We know the industry is heading that way. We know the market's heading that way. But we're going to need some public investments, just like we've needed public, public investments once upon a time to create the, the current fueling infrastructure we have to, to get to that future. And I believe Hennepin County will play a leadership role in that.
So would you set up like charging stations at maybe libraries or something?
Yeah, you know, that's, that, I haven't seen specifically that idea. That's like more tactical than is in the 40, the 40 rough-ish page plan, but that would be an example of an idea that I think would merit serious consideration.
Yeah, we, we are in Eden Prairie, we are moving, trying to get more charging stations and, and, you know, more energy-wise, more efficient housing and apartments and buildings. So, so any area that, any new niche in there, we'd love to know. And the last question is about affordable housing. I know your family here with, in Eden Prairie, that we, we had an affordable housing task force, we organized one, and then they gave us a renewable recommendation. We are in the process of looking at each recommendation separately. The staff is looking at it to see what are the next steps. And in addition to that, Eden Prairie Community Foundation also working together with Affordable Housing Task Force members to create a, a fund as well. Now, I was wondering, is there anything that specifically that you're doing? You know, I know sometimes we are not there yet, but when you do that, we'd love to know. We'd love to partner with you and how we can leverage some of the acting who's taking place in housing and, and north of an area in Eden Prairie as well.
Yeah, thank you so much for those insights. And, you know, number one, just want to recognize Eden Prairie's ambitious, ambition and leadership in this space. You know, specifically because of the role I play as Hennepin's HRA chair, one of my goals is similar to these conversations. You know, I would love to meet with any of our cities that have an affordable housing task force, just to hear what you're hearing, learn what you're learning. I think this affordable housing conversation sometimes looks different out here in the suburbs than it does for, you know, some of our, you know, more urban communities. And I think bringing that voice and perspective to these board conversations is really important, and you all doing the work can even help educate me on that. I'd, I'd say in terms of the work that we're doing, I'm really glad to hear about the fund that you all are setting up, or if that's part of the recommendation. I didn't quite fully catch that. But that's very similar to how we, you know, exert leadership in this space as well. We have three different affordable housing funds. One is our Supportive Housing Fund that targets first in dollars towards extremely affordable housing. That's a newer initiative. We started a couple of years ago. The other is through our Affordable Housing Incentive Fund. It's about $5 million a year in support of housing investments more across the spectrum, though we have been historic, or more recently, trying to align more of those investments towards the deep affordability end of the spectrum. And then finally, it's through our Transit Oriented Development, which is really, some of that's housing, some of that's more just, you know, different transit and pedestrian enhancements. But I think each of these areas represents a unique opportunity to align investments, align dollars, align strategies, and that's best accomplished by, you know, being in close conversation. So if you all are aware of a project that you all are putting some dollars in, for us to know that, for my HRA team to know that. So we're, we're thinking about that as we're evaluating projects.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time and answering the question. But thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to say thank you for coming. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'd like to say thank you. We appreciate all the rent and small business grants that Eden Prairie got during the COVID that were so necessary. Housing is a big deal for us, and I'm sure our staff would be happy to go over some of the conclusions from our Affordable Housing Task Force with you as they did some wonderful work and came to some good ideas. And anytime you'd like to see them, I'm sure we can get someone to sit down with you and get you everything we have. Also, climate action's important, and we've had a climate action plan, and it's something that we would be delighted to see in all Hennepin suburbs. So I'm glad that Hennepin County is working towards that as well. And once again, staff, I'm sure, would be very happy to talk about some of our electric vehicles and what we're looking at for electric trucks and possible even such things as electric trucks when we can. And our, we have a director who's very, very interested in that, and I'm sure would love to share some of the things he's discovered, that he always would like to see other people go and do some things, things that we've tried. So it's, we would love to pass along and also here with Hennepin County. So you have a question, Mark?
Not a question. I just want to thank you, Chris, as far as coming out also, and I wish you well in your first year. You know, it's, you got, you got some, a good, solid, ambitious approach. I like the way you laid that out, and I look forward to working with you on it. Thank you.
Well, it's an honor to be with partners in local government. I said at the beginning of, beginning of my presentation, you know, it's a, it's a painful and high stakes time for residents, for, for those governments that serve them. We can either be the ones that are standing up as the adults in the room, trying to make their lives a little bit easier, or we can become symbols in many cases of the problem. I think with so much polarization and fragmentation, partisanship in our national politics, we really have an opportunity to do a little bit differently and show residents what they should expect. So thank you all for your leadership. Thank you for laying down some really relevant lanes for ongoing partnership and conversation, and I'll look forward to continuing.
Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you next year or before.
We'll be in touch before next year. Thank you.
Thanks. Next on our agenda is to accept a gift from Elaine Sampson for the Art Center equipment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes, we, we have been very fortunate, obviously, as you know, dating back to 2008. The city was, accepted the donation of a building, a 5,400 square foot building that is now our city art center. And we have had the, the honor of being able to receive pretty regular funding from Elaine Sampson for programming as well at that art center for equipment and programming. So the, the motion tonight is to adopt the resolution accepting a donation of $10,000 from Elaine Sampson to go to our art center equipment and programs. And as you know, we, we have many. We have classes and summer camps and open studio, birthday parties, group outings, and it, obviously, the center's a place to display artwork. So obviously, a jewel of the city, and we're always thrilled to accept donations.
And we'd like to thank Elaine Sampson for all her generous gifts. Do I have a, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $10,000 from Elaine Sampson to go towards art center equipment and programs?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the $10,000 grant from Elaine Sampson. All in favor, please say aye.
Roll call, roll call.
Roll call, that's right.
Sorry.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Motion is adopted, and thank you Elaine Sampson so much. The next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add, council reports, or anything else to the agenda at this point? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mark Freiberg and seconded by Lisa Toomey to approve the agenda. Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Next on the agenda is to approve the city council minutes for Tuesday, April 6th, 2021, and the workshop, April 6th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the four city council minutes. Council workshop has Tuesday, April 6th, 2021. Council, city council may need help Tuesday, April 6th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Councilmember Narayan and seconded by Councilmember Freiberg on the minutes. Call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson?
Aye. That minutes have been approved then. Next is, we don't have any reports from the advisory board, so the next is the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve items A through F on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Made by Councilmember Toomey, seconded by Councilmember Narayan, move to approve items A through F on the consent calendar. Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Member Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson?
Aye. It's been approved. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. The first is on a code mem amendment for gymnasiums. Mr. Getchard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nelson. You may remember, council discussed a number of different planning items at workshop recently that we're working on, updates to a lot of our code language. This one coming forward is to create a definition for gymnasiums in our zoning code. For a number of years, we have obviously allowed, and we continue to allow and encourage gymnasiums in, in many of our different zoning districts, but we've never actually had a definition for gymnasium. So this action tonight is to create that definition. And as you know, as, as is in the cover report, and in the minutes of the Planning Commission, they talked about this as well. There was some discussion on percent allowed of gymnasium space in the industrial district, but that was recommended by the Planning Commission not to put that restriction on there, so that restriction is not coming forward. But as I said, really, this action tonight is to add a definition of gymnasium and allow us to interpret our code, because as you know, there are many different types of commercial gymnasiums in commercial and industrial areas of all types and sizes, so this will provide some clarity. It was recommended unanimously by the Planning Commission and now comes to the city council to hold a public hearing and approve first reading of this amendment to Chapter 11. to hold a public hearing and approve first reading of this amendment to Chapter 11.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this code amendment for gymnasiums? Seeing none, council, questions?
I got a question for Mr. Getchow. I could have a second. Refresh my mind, if you could, as far as what, when we were talking about the definition of gymnasium, my understanding, as I'm sitting here right now, it was when we're including, like, dance studios. Am I correct? There were a couple other ones.
Yeah, there's different kinds of gymnastics, fitness studios, workout facilities.
We're defining-
Like, all, yeah, all that can come into a clearer definition. So we've been in contact with all the businesses in Eden Prairie that would fit that definition. So they've been aware of this, and they know that we're doing this.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one quick question, and you probably answered it for me already, but I can't remember. Is the 20-foot ceiling limit still going to be, I mean, does it have to have at least a ceiling limit of 20 feet?
So I'll let our city planner do a quick overview of the ceiling height issue or clearance.
Members of the council, the proposed definition does include a reference to ceiling height within the structure of a gymnasium, so the definition includes that vertical height of 20 feet, as well as outlines the types of uses, ball courts, turf areas, volleyball courts, other types of uses that would be considered gymnasiums. As Mr. Getchow said, the definition would provide clarity and consistency in applying that definition and interpreting our code in everyday use.
If there's a, I don't know if there is, but if there's a business right now that doesn't conform exactly, would they get grandfathered in or something?
Members of the council, the city staff has done outreach to a couple of the property owners that would be nonconforming if this amendment is approved by the council. We've had that communication prior to Planning Commission, as well as prior to City Council. And what staff would do is provide them with a zoning compliance certificate noting that they would be nonconforming, they could continue to operate, repair, maintenance, but not expand their use, so that they'd have that documentation for, you know, future business communications.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to say something-
I have a question.
Okay, after Mark. Mark, then PG.
Okay, I was just wondering, now, when we talk about anything that possibly may need to be grandfathered in, I'd like to see that, you know, from my perspective, be fairly loose as opposed to real strict. I mean, just, I take it there's probably not going to be all that many, but I don't want to cause a hardship through something, through clarity, you know, whenever possible as far as on that. I guess that's something that always concerns me.
Mayor, as member of the council, based on staff's research, there are two uses in Eden Prairie that would become nonconforming, and we have done outreach to both of them at both Planning Commission and City Council prior to those meetings, as well as had verbal conversations with them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Norrion?
It's code amendment. Do we have any provision for the children's action? Because recently, some of you probably know that there was news about a kid going under a peloton, and, you know, fortunately, nothing bad happened. Anything we need to add to protect the children?
Mayor, members of the council, the zoning ordinance definition doesn't go into performance standards so much as it does define what the use is.
Does that answer your question? Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, if no more questions, are we ready to close the public hearing? And I'd like a motion on the code of Chapter 11 change.
I'll move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 11, relating to gymnasiums.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Toomey and seconded by Councilmember Freiberg to close the public hearing and approve the first reading and ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 11, relating to gymnasiums. Can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Case? Sorry, Acting Mayor Nelson?
Motion is approved. Second one is 7076, 7078 Shady Oak facade remodel.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We have an applicant proposing to remodel their current industrial building on Shady Oak Road in the Golden Triangle. The building was built in 1984, and the applicant will be making changes to the building. This action requires, it goes straight to the City Council. So when it's more of a facade remodel and not a major improvement or expansion, it goes through, straight to the City Council and not to the Planning Commission. So there isn't, obviously, a report from planning. The applicant is with us virtually, and she will provide an overview and presentation of their proposed remodel, and then the staff and applicant can answer any questions you have. And then the action is simply to approve a development agreement for the project. And I believe, is it Caroline, is online to provide an overview. Welcome.
Yes, thank you, council, and I'm here for having me this evening. I work for Eagle Ridge Partners. Are you guys getting steam back at all?
We're okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I work for Eagle Ridge Partners. We are a commercial investment, and I'll be coming helping in Minneapolis. We own about 200,000 lights per acre of real estate in the metro area, actually about 850,000 of that is in Eden Prairie. So we really enjoy working in Eden Prairie and around the Golden Triangle station where this is actually located. So then we'll, this, see. Okay. So today, I am presenting the exterior renovation of 7076 Shady Oak Road, a little background of the building used in April. It's currently occupied by Nyad Kovaire Corporation. We have elected to downsize and relocate another patient in Eden Prairie. We have signed in these Sun Opta Foods who are really weak in Edina, and they are going to be moving to this building to build out their new North American headquarters. So our project location here, located just northwest Highway 169 on Shady Oak Road, almost adjacent to Golden Triangle Station, to the east of Mike, a private, and Highway 212. This is the existing site survey of the building. I'm just showing this to show the existing conditions, and we are not proposing any site at this time. Here are some existing building images. As you can see, it was built in the 1980s, and it's obviously currently, definitely represents that look. One of the largest challenges of the building is 95% of the glazing is at a slant facing outward, so not only is it aesthetically not very pleasing, but it creates a janitorial and cleaning issue for the applicant as well. And you can see on the west side of the building, all the dock doors that are currently being removed on that side of the building. And you'll see our proposal line includes adding a significant number of windows on that side of the building. So this, these are memories of the new entrance. We are relocating the entrance from the kind of southeast side to the northeast side of the building, creating kind of a two-story entrance with a curb wall for there to bring in as much natural intent there, creating a signage opportunity of the fence. Would like that, and then so adding that really nice panel, you know, to provide some protection for the homes. We're also adding a new A B ramp at the entrance as well. Okay, so here are the building elevations. This is the east facade for the new maintenance. So we, our plans show to paint existing recast panels on the top to a dark gray color. We will be painting existing elements in a white to a more bronze color to match the new window glazing system. And then we're also going to be replacing all of the glass to an energy-efficient glazing system to promote the entire thing. And then you can also see a clothing slab glazing. We're going to be replacing an existing white dilapidated fence with this new gray fencing that'll match the aesthetic of the building. This is the north elevation. This is the same condition with replaced glass and painting repass panels. And then we're also going to be painting existing veneer to match the gray fencing of the block. Then all the windows are going to be expanded to approximately 6 feet tall with 15-inch Okay, and then last use of the west facade, we are adding no windows currently. We're adding seven of these smaller, five or six feet, five-toe feet windows. And you can see there's a potential injury, but it would look like the state point. This is where they're kind of all hands meet location be. And then we're also replacing in all locations where there are dock doors, except for two, we're adding eight-foot by eight-foot windows in those locations. So while we don't think this is a hugely significant modification of the building, we think it'll significantly add value and an appeal for this new user as well as aesthetics for the whole city look and feel.
Is there a staff report on this, Mr. Getchow?
Mayor, as I said earlier, the, you know, this comes straight to the council and not to the Planning Commission, and staff recommends approval and does not have any special conditions on the project.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this project? If not, are there questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Freiberg?
Thank you very much, Mayor. While I'm looking at this plan, I'm looking at what the existing conditions on the front were to what you're planning to do with a very, very little difference in height. It's amazing. It's absolutely amazing when you look at it, and I'm very impressed. You know, hats off. That's quite a difference in that building.
Thank you. Yeah, we're very excited, and I'm thankful to have the user, Hassan Apte, in the city of Eden Prairie. Wonderful.
Any other councilmembers? If not, if we're ready to move to a motion, do I have someone who would like to move to close the public hearing and about the development assessment or amendment?
I'll move to close the public hearing and direct staff to prepare an addendum of the developers' agreement incorporating staff recommendation and council conditions.
I think that's an amendment of the agreement. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Toomey. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next, we have payment of claims. Does someone want to make a motion? Does anyone have a question about any of the items on the payment of claims?
I will move to approve the payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Toomey and seconded by Councilmember Norrion to approve the payment of claims. Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Member Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson?
We are on to ordinances and resolutions. There's a first reading of an ordinance mending City Code, Chapter 5, Section 5.36, relating to licensing of collectors of waste. Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. So this is something that you've talked quite a bit about over the last year or two, mainly related to organics collection coming to, actually, all cities in Hennepin County. At the end of 2018, the county adopted an ordinance stating that every city in Hennepin County will offer curbside collection of organic materials in their community. And obviously, as you know, because we've talked a lot about our city's sustainability efforts, our city's solid waste management plan that we've developed, that our approach is to, at least as of the last year and leading up to now, was to meet with the haulers in Eden Prairie, the residential haulers that we have in Eden Prairie, and have them provide the organic recycling in Eden Prairie through the work that they already do with solid waste and recycling. So this ordinance is putting that in place. There are a few other housekeeping items related to those that do apply, what the requirements are on insurance and on the license application, and some of the terminology that's needed in our ordinance for organic hauling. But as you know, through at least the last two council workshops, that the plan for when this program begins in 2022 is that our existing haulers, of which we have five, so we have, you know, the side note there is, for a city our size, 36 square miles, we have a limited number of haulers, which we think is really good in terms of cost competitiveness and in the environment and sustainability, but that those haulers would provide the organic service. So this first reading of the ordinance puts that in place.
Councilmembers, questions, comments?
I just have a couple of questions, just for people that are listening for Mr. Getchow. So we're going to have three cans, three separate garbage cans now, then, huh?
Well, it depends. I'll let our Public Works Director provide some explanation, but there may be different methods, Councilmember Toomey. I know one hauler actually may offer you a bag to put in your organic waste that you could put on your garbage can, so you may not get another can. Another hauler may offer a can, so we're working with them. And what's the best method for them to pick up the organics along with what they're doing right now? So that may not necessarily be the case with all of them.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Councilmember Norrion?
You know, I'm fine, thank you. I'd like to move a motion, though, if nobody else has listened.
Please, go ahead.
Move to approve the first reading of ordinance mending the code 5, Section 5.36, relating to licensing of collectors of waste.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion before we move to a vote? I'm glad we finally have gotten the statement of what we're doing with this, Mr. Getchow. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson?
We are getting to that. Are there any other reports, Mr. Getchow?
There is not, Mayor. There is not, Mayor.
Okay, so I think we're at the point for adjournment. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up this time? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll move to adjourn the City Council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Councilmember Toomey and seconded by Councilmember Freiberg. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you all. Also, I'd like to thank all the people that are outside as well as inside and for bringing us information and a nice, quiet, very civil for all the work going on, and we appreciate that. And May 4, I believe, is the meeting, is it not, Mr. Getchow, that we're planning to take up the project that you are quite interested in? So there will be a time for limited, for comments, and I believe Mayor Case will explain that to you, but we do very much approve of your being, letting all the other business go forth, and thank you for that. We're done for the evening then. We're adjourned.
Open cavalry.
Oh, obviously not as used to that.